Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you all. We have a nice crowd in the audience this morning. I would ask that you turn your phones on silent ring or turn them off altogether so we don't have any interruptions. Am I correct what you call a roll?
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Lainer.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here.
Do we stand for the flag of the parade?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, you protect, provide, and establish us. We praise you for who you are, the source of eternal salvation. We give you thanks for all the good things that you give us, your children. We look to you today, Lord holy Father, to be our strength. Please protect us in your mercy, provide for the needs of our county, and establish us in truth which will guide our decisions. Draw near, O mighty God, and grant that we may ordinately desire, prudently examine, truthfully acknowledge, and perfectly accomplish what is pleasing to you for the praise and glory of your name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioners, you have in front of you your agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Otherwise, I would like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moves.
All in favor, say aye. Nays, the ayes have it. I'm going to take chairman's privilege for a minute. We have four distinguished guests in the audience, and I'd like to have Troop 1884 stand up.
Okay, fine.
We got five of them now. Four.
No, five.
Four, five. These young men are with the Boy Scouts, and they are here because they're going to be studying about citizenship in their community. And I think we owe them some applause because it takes a lot of courage to come before this many people and present themselves, so. Would any of you like to say something? Let's have your names. What's your names?
I am Hale from Troop 1884.
Troop 1884.
Gabe, Troop 1884.
And in the back there? Oh, we have one here.
Doctor, Troop 1884.
In the back?
Renee Cox, Troop 1884.
Yeah, Renee Cox, Troop 1884.
Okay. Well, we want to welcome you, and I hope that you enjoy your visit with us. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of February 3rd, the tax releases and refunds, Sheriff K-9 donation budget amendment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So good.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes, thank you. Next is Christopher Jennigan with the South Mountain Children and Family Services. You don't like, you look like Christopher.
I don't like Christopher, but I told him I would give him a little bit of an introduction. I wanted, we wanted to come and bring you an update. We, the, you know, partners with the county and municipalities are working in a collaborative effort to try to improve some circumstances for children that we have to deal with who have been physically and sexually abused. When we have those cases, we have to utilize what's called a Children's Advocacy Center. Currently, Teddy Bear in Greenville serves approximately 29 counties according to their website. And when we get these cases, you know, it's very crucial that we're able to go ahead and get these children in these centers, have trained forensic interviewers and trained medical exams to try to look to see if there's anything medically that's occurred, and also with the forensic interview to gather evidence from the interview to determine if we're able to move forward from a social services standpoint and also from a law enforcement standpoint. And right now, you know, we've been seeing a, you know, what we would call a very long wait, you know, weeks, sometimes even over a month, where we're able to get an appointment because of the need in the area and the lack of available resources. So, multiple partner agencies, the District Attorney's Office, Scott Thomas is here today, Captain Daniels from New Bern Police Department, Sheriff Hughes from Craven County Sheriff's Department, and Chief Morgan Williams from the Havelock Police Department, and some other law enforcement agencies, NCIS, and if I'm leaving someone out, I'm sorry. And we got together and started talking about this issue, what we could do to try to prove, provide better outcomes for the children that we serve, and when it comes to children's advocacy centers. Hopefully, what we'll see is, you know, better services provided to them in a more expedient manner and better outcomes when it comes to possible law enforcement and social services intervention and prosecution. So when we started doing that, we said we wanted to start up one of these centers. Well, we kind of had a blank sheet, blank page. We had never started up one. We were working with children's advocacy centers in North Carolina. Then we came across South Mountain Children and Family Services. They're based out of Morganton, North Carolina, and they have actually have a long history of, you know, starting these centers dating all the way back to 1998. I think by the end of the year, you'll have nine throughout, say, 10 throughout the state. Setting up these centers in communities so their children who have been affected by these horrible issues can go ahead and try and get some intervention and services in place as quickly as possible. So, we're moving forward pretty quickly with that. Chris and his organization are taking the lead, so I'm not going to state anymore about what is happening or not because, as we said, it is an operation under their umbrella. But we just, we're getting pretty close to the finish line, so we wanted to come and, you know, let you know who the organization is, Chris to speak on their behalf, and give you some information about what this center will do to serve not only Craven but Pamlico County as well. We're going to do a joint effort with them. He's also going to be setting up one in Carteret, so we'll have a sister facility there that can provide coverage ongoing, you know, after hours and things such as that. So, without further ado, Chris Jennigan from South Mountain Family and Children's Services will come up and give you an update.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our esteemed Boy Scout guests. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to share with you what we are trying to do for your children and families here in Craven and Pamlico Counties. We are very excited, as Jeff mentioned, we've been doing this for a long time. South Mountain Children and Family Services has been around since 1903, mostly caring for children in kind of a group care type setting, but we branched out into this avenue in 1998, as Jeff mentioned, with our first Children's Advocacy Center and saw the benefit of that. And so we continue to grow those in western North Carolina over the last couple of decades and are just now branching into eastern North Carolina. Now, first of all, you might want to, might want to ask, why would somebody from the Mountains be coming over to eastern North Carolina? And there's two answers. One, it's our mission. We believe very strongly in these programs and want to see them all across the state of North Carolina and help them grow. Secondly, I'm an eastern North Carolina boy. I was raised in Selma and spent a lot of time coming to Atlantic Beach in the summers and would always drive through beautiful New Bern. And all I knew of it was, you look down the road as you came by to see the Big Triumph House. Never knew that it would be such a great place to visit, but we certainly enjoy being here and enjoy working with the folks that you have here. I have some staff to introduce to you, but prior to doing that, I'd really like to show you the video that helps explain what a Children's Advocacy Center is, and then when I introduce the folks, you'll better understand their roles. So if we could show that, and I apologize, we had about seven minutes of video. I'm trying not to take up too much of your time, but I think it'll help a lot of people. One of the myths about child abuse is that children can never be whole again. We don't believe that. We believe that with the right treatment, with the right help, children can live very happy, productive, beautiful lives if we're all working together to help that child and family.
At the Children's Advocacy Center, everybody comes together. We've got Department of Social Services, we've got law enforcement, we've got the District Attorney's Office, we've got medical providers, we've got mental health providers. We're all working together as an expert team for that child.
One of the key aspects of a Children's Advocacy Center is that the child can come to one location, and the child can tell that story to someone who's professionally trained to ask them the right questions. So while that interview's taking place, law enforcement, Department of Social Services, all those people who need that information can watch that interview from a closed circuit television set in another room. And so at some point in time during the interview, the interviewer will take a break and come into the observation room.
All of our goals are to keep that child safe, but we have different processes and systems we have to work through in order to do that. So give everybody the opportunity to make sure they have everything that they need before that child leaves so that we don't have to do it again.
So now they can get all the information they need in that interview without everybody having to come in and interview that child separately. You know, a properly conducted investigation and interview that solicits the appropriate information means that there's less chances that that child is going to have to be exposed to more steps in the legal process, which shields that child and protects that child in the long run.
Obviously, we have to be able to convey this child's story to a jury of 12 people. And the child advocacy centers that are run by South Mountain partner with us in that goal. Through the use of forensic interviewing, they're able to talk to children and find the truth in what actually happened to these children.
The recorded interview from the child advocacy centers is one of the most valuable pieces of information that we can get to seek justice and to prosecute the person that did it. When we're in court, it's a huge piece because a jury expects to see that child very emotional about that event. Imagine a seven-year-old having to talk about sex in front of 30 or 40 strangers. Usually, the normal reaction is to be very unemotional on the stand. You put up a video that shows the raw trauma that that child had suffered through. You hear it in the child's own words, see all the emotion on the child. They do understand when they see it in the video.
Not every child coming to the Children's Advocacy Center receive a medical examination, but many of them do. And when they need a medical examination, it's so important that that be able to take place at the CAC. We want a child to be in a child-friendly exam room with medical providers who are trained specifically in dealing with child abuse trauma and sexual abuse.
When I do a head-to-toe assessment, I am looking at their eyes, their ears, their nose, their throat, listening to their heart, their lungs. It helps them realize that, yes, this happened to me, but it's not going to affect me forever. I'm going to be okay. And they'll just get this huge smile on their face and kind of a sense of relief.
If a child has been hurt by abuse, it is important that they get the mental health treatment services that they need. All of our therapists are licensed and they're certified in trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, the gold standard for treatment for children who have been traumatized.
So, we help that child and the non-offending caregiver build up coping skills so that they're able to really tolerate talking and processing the trauma that they've experienced. This is something that happened to them, it's part of their life, but it doesn't make up who they are.
These are children that we really have to invest in, in our community. These are the children that will grow up and become the next generation of leaders, and South Mountain really provides an important link in that chain. The way they're able to provide these wraparound services allows these children to go on to live fruitful, productive lives.
We absolutely owe it to the child to provide the justice that they deserve, to provide the treatment that they need and the recovery that they need in the least invasive, most coordinated way possible. The South Mountain team is fantastic.
They have a passion for this area. They have a passion for children, they have a passion for helping. Really is one of the few organizations where you see results. I would highly recommend that any municipal manager, county manager, you have the opportunity to get one of these resources in your community, make every effort to get that to happen.
South Mountain started their first Children's Advocacy Centers 20 years ago. Today, we are serving 12 counties with eight advocacy centers, and we're still continuing to grow. For our staff, it's not just about the work, it's about the outcome. We know at South Mountain, if we give them everything that they deserve and that they need, we can help create a better future for them.
Our mission at South Mountain is to provide pathways for children, families, and the community. We see Children's Advocacy Centers as the ultimate pathway to help children heal from horrible traumatic events, to help families endure what has happened, to help communities to learn to prevent child abuse. We are growing our Children's Advocacy Centers across North Carolina because we believe so strongly that this is the appropriate model to help children and families. We began the process of opening a Children's Advocacy Center here about a year ago. A lot of the funding comes from the Governor's Crime Commission, and so we have to apply for a lot of grants early on, and those grants were approved, and so we were able to move ahead. So, we're excited now that we're getting so close to opening. And the first thing I want you to know is that the sheriff, the chiefs, the DSS director, the DA, and the other folks that have been working with us have been fantastic. You have, you have a fabulous group of leaders here in your community who care about children, and we applaud them. Our job is to be their partner. That is all we do. We try to do this service in cooperation with them on their behalf. We'll, as you saw, we'll help do investigation or interview and medical exam and provide some treatment services and help coordinate a team meeting where all these folks will come together and discuss these cases and move ahead. We're just a player in that. We're just a partner of your agencies, and we appreciate their support so much. I'll introduce to you now some of the staff that are here with us. You saw Janet Boyd in the video, she is our chief operating officer. You heard them talk about a medical exam. Pat O'Connor will be the nurse practitioner who will be providing medical exams here. Our next person here, this is his first day of employment, this is Tristan Thomas. He is going to be your center director and forensic interviewer. We were very excited to be able to find Tristan. He's been working for Carteret DSS, so he already has some DSS experience, some interviewing experience, already trained in one of the various models that we train our staff in to do the interviews. Bertina Campano is our mental health therapist, and she'll be working hand-in-hand with other, you already have some mental health therapists who do trauma work here in the community. She'll work hand-in-hand with them, will just be one addition to that to help make sure the children here are getting all the services that they need. That's pretty much kind of in a nutshell what the whole program is. Again, we're funded mostly through Governor's Crime Commission, the state of North Carolina, the legislature of North Carolina appropriates money for Children's Advocacy Centers. It comes through the Health and Human Services. We are always working as a body. We belong to the North Carolina Children's Advocacy Centers. As a matter of fact, I'm the immediate past chair of that group, and we are always working with our legislators to try to, to secure more funding for Children's Advocacy Centers so that communities can have this service because we know, we know funding in communities is so limited. So we'll continue to work on getting funding through GCC and through the state of North Carolina. It may come a time when we have to do some fundraisers or something in your community to kind of help support it, but at this point in time, we are very, very fortunate that we are getting our funding through these other sources, and we feel very blessed that we've been able to do that.
Okay.
Are there any questions I could answer?
Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that this is my dream come true that we could start with our young, younger people, to train them from the beginning, and obviously right to the hospital all up. Maybe we can catch it early and we can save a lot of money. The people working together, they can accomplish this. And I'm so glad that we have so many people that are interested in charity because that's where the bulk of our tax money is spent. When we elect to train kids at an early age, as they grow up, we begin to spend money at the hospital, we begin to spend money in the jails, we begin to spend money in taking care of them, then to get in prison. So we are, we are actually, you just can't imagine how much money we'll be saving. And when you say tax bills, you know, people are going to say, my tax dollars, but that's the best way to spend your tax dollars. Start from the beginning and get the kids straight before they get a chance to cost you a lot of money going to prison and going to the hospital or going to mental health. And I think this is a great idea, and I know that people working together, they seem like they are very concerned, and I am concerned about our young people, since we have so many that's dying at a young age, but before they die, it costs, costs you millions of dollars. So we are spending this money one way, but if we spend it this way, it's spent well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Mitchell, you have a question?
Yes, sir, I have two questions, I guess. First question is, how close are you to actually opening the doors? And if so, where will this center be located?
Thank you, Commissioner. Some things I forgot to say. We're very fortunate that we have found a location at 506 Pollock Street. Beautiful Victorian home that we will be renting. We already have our recording equipment in, our medical equipment has been ordered to be put in. With Tristan being able to come onboard today, he'll finish up some training, we're going to start moving some furniture in. Our hope is by mid-March to be actually doing interviews. Could even happen a little sooner depending on how quickly we can get the medical equipment in.
Wonderful. And my second question is, will there be a permanent liaison assigned from, say, the Sheriff's Department, Havelock Police, or New Bern Police? Or how will that work in terms of connectivity between law enforcement and DSS and children's advocacy group?
If they'll allow me, I'll answer. We have a multidisciplinary team. There should be one representative from each of those agencies that are assigned to that team. The team will meet weekly, and when there is a case, a certain officer may have to present at that case. But we are hoping that they will have one person assigned who will pretty much be there all the time.
Thank you.
We're pretty lucky that we have three of the gentlemen that will be working with you. Scott Thomas, our district attorney, did you want to say something, Scott?
Mr. Chairman, this is something we've been waiting on and needed in this area for a long time, and we're glad that South Mountain is here to provide this service.
And I see Chief Summers back there.
I guess so.
Is there any comment you would like to make?
I echo what Mr. President Scott Thomas said, and we're very fortunate to have this program here.
And we have the chief from Havelock here, too. Chief Williams?
I echo what they're saying, and I mean, just a bit, they brought us up like this because down on the, we lost time, and now we don't have to do a lot of green bill or crime assessments.
Well, I just want to thank all three for taking the time to be here today to support this effort. And any other questions, by any of the commissioners? Would the sheriff like to comment?
The chief said, if the attorney, our third, we shouldn't have this opportunity, but everybody's on board. The district attorney had contacted me early on about it, and we all just read it. You know, like the chief said, you know, these lead times, it takes us a long time to get these children the help they need immediately, was what interested me. Now, we're talking about instead of weeks, hours, and that, that's you, it took a long time to just have children.
Thank you. You know, the Commissioners are really relaxed today. We have four police chiefs here. Thank you very much.
As a final word, I'll just thank you for what you do. I'm newly elected to the city council in Morganton, so I better appreciate the work that you have before you, and for those of you running for reelection, I can commiserate today. Thank you very much.
Okay. Before I get into the next topic, I just want to remind the Commissioners that we have a long day today, and I think you better plan to be here until about 4:30 this afternoon, and that we have a work session this afternoon, and we got about 10 items on there that are going to have to be taken care of, so just want to remind you of that. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Semiannual Report. Andrew Shorter, Director, and Chairman Meekins.
Good morning, Chairman Mark and Commissioners. I am Charles Meekins, presently serving as Chairman of the Airport Authority. Joining me today is Director Andy Shorter, who in a brief few moments will be sharing with us projects and timelines associated with those projects that will take place over the next five years in the areas of new construction and renovation, specifically new construction in a new aircraft rescue building and firefighting building. And then, secondly, renovation where our terminal is going to get a facelift. An aesthetically, we'll modernize it to what you see when you go to one of our larger airports and major hubs. So we are delighted to be here in our semiannual presentation to you. These are exciting times in aviation, but they are exhilarating times in airports. There's unprecedented growth and expansion taking place nationally in our network, especially in the areas of those airports that offer commercial service. As you may well know, Coastal Carolina Regional Airport is one of only 10 airports in the state that offers such service. As you recall from our locally manufactured brochure that we distributed to you back in November and December, the economic impact of our airport to our area results in over $360 million in business revenues, over 2,100 jobs, greater than $72 million in personal income, and over $12 million in state and local taxes. Our airport is an economic engine for our county, and we are entering a very exciting period and have construction already underway with some of the small projects, and this will continue intently over the next five years and beyond. I'll ask Director Andy Shorter to step up and share with us some of these schedules and some of these project descriptions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
The next 106 slides I have will go through very quickly and turn the time back over to this meeting. As you can see, that's our, our vision statement, and what we really try to relate to people is the friendly airport of eastern North Carolina. Quickly, you've seen these before, but just a reminder, our very valuable authority members that you select for us, we appreciate that, the time and effort you put into having those people come. And then our non-voting members, which again, we're the regional airports, so by the state statute that establishes the authority, we have a member from Jones County, Pamlico County, Carteret County. Again, they're very valuable, and the same is Cherry Point, and I'll talk one minute how that helps us kind of to date today basis sometimes. Okay, this is what I'm going to go over very quickly. You know, I come up here generally once a year, or absolutely once a year, with a grant, and I present it in front of you, and it's kind of something that hangs out there by itself in a vacuum, more or less. So what I'm going to do today is, one, show you how those grants flow through, what we do with them. It's interesting that the FAA money, those grants are four-year grants, so we have four years to fully execute and obligate the money. But then we have a plan, a five-year plan. We do this 20-year master plan that we update every 10 years to come up with a five-year program for how we're going to get to these new, exciting, in this case, buildings that we're talking about at the airport, or just development at the airport. And then we'll, quickly, we'll go over the 20-year map again, or have a look at it, see if there's any questions. That's what the Chair just talked about. I love this picture, so that's why I like putting the slide up. But again, what a great asset here in the county. New Bern right in the background, you know, this picture kind of shows location, 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 and that's what we have going for us, or one of the things we have going for us at the airport. Okay, so these are a couple exciting things. Most of the time, we're talking about air service, or a lot of it, the business of what we do at the airport is about the commercial air service. But just recently, we had a National Guard charter flight. The unit here in New Bern wanted to fly out of New Bern, so the contracted carrier for that was a lead- that was Allegiant. So no kidding, we had an Allegiant jet here about three Saturdays ago land and pick up that unit. I talked about our partnership with Cherry Point, and you can see the ladder truck right there, we borrowed that from Cherry Point, so we have a memorandum of understanding to be able to use their equipment if need be for the next year. So that was very helpful. So that was kind of a team effort. It's a FedEx baggage loader right there that we used for the cargo ramp. So you might be saying, well, that's a pretty big airplane, but you've been talking about this longer runway to make sure we get bigger airplanes. Well, this was in a cold winter day. Jet engines are very responsive to temperatures, so on a cold winter day, an aircraft this large has no problem getting in or out of New Bern. But when we're talking about the runway extension, it's kind of the body of work. That's a year-round requirement. When you get the hot summer days, you need the longer runway. So I just want to make sure we don't pull anybody off the mark on that. But these are some of the things the airport provides, and not just our day-in and day-out service. And then the picture in the bottom was, again, a few weeks ago, on a Friday, there were some fires in the area. So the North Carolina Forestry Division has their own firefighting aircraft, so they come in, you can see the hose is hooked up to a hydrant there, and they fill water right on the flight line, and they probably made about 20 runs that afternoon fighting a fire here locally. So air service, we talked about a lot, but there's a dozen other missions that go on, maybe not daily, but certainly monthly at the airport. Okay, so AIP, Airport Improvement Program, that's what these grants come under, and that's funded by the FAA. It's federal. They're user fees that supply the account that these monies come from. So when you buy that airplane ticket and you see one of those fees in there, that's building up the funds for this account. So in 2017, we have a grant, this was a planning grant, fairly small in relation to what we normally have, $363,000. And this was to finish up the master plan update, do the survey work, and then finally do the... In the master plan, we did a lot of study, we did a lot of surveys and things, you know, we came up, this is what we were talking about before, we have everything codified in this executive summary. But finally, what we have to present to the FAA is this ALP drawing set. That's an Airport Layout Plan, and that gets presented to the FAA, and then they actually approve and sign that. So the master plan, they accept, it's a little bit of variation in terms here, but then the ALP is what they approve and sign. And then as we go forward doing this programming and budgeting, things that are not on that ALP, that they have signed and committed to, are very difficult to get funded. So this is a very important piece of this. So this is what we got done with this grant. So we're in the process of finishing those items up and then getting this closed out sometime this year. AIP 42, Airport Improvement Program 42 Grant, that was the $5.2 million. And basically, the majority of that, as you can see, the terminal apron rehabilitation, this is this portion here, behind the terminal, where the aircraft load and unload passengers, that was about four acres of asphalt. Now you can see in the picture, it's six acres of concrete, so capable of handling all the aircraft that we think will be in our plan in the next 20 years. And then we had some cleanup work to do on the trees. I showed part of this picture last time. We finally, you can see the more brown area where the final trees that got cut down. And oh, by the way, this is how this stuff works out, that Allegiant jet that landed, the weather was bad that morning, and the day prior, the FAA approach plates, the new ones came out, lowered our minimums back down because we'd gotten these trees cut. We may not have been able to land that aircraft that morning had our minimums not gotten back down. So, you know, nothing like just in time, but that's how these things work and interrelate to cutting trees equal commerce. And this is just what the big plan looks like, and you can see a little bit better effect of where those trees are. This is Bryces Creek, of course. This is the forest property that we have now been permitted, permitted to us, about 200 acres, to monitor and take care of for the next 20 years, so we don't have that problem again where the trees become too high and encumber the approach surfaces of the runway four. Okay, so then finally, AIP Grant 43. You notice I skipped 41. 41, we already completed. It was a taxiway overlay and some apron overlay, and that one's already been closed out. Grant 43, it was a $1.3 million. And you can see, these two are completed here in green, and that was really a payback. The firefighting facility design, as I talked about before, we kind of went out on risk, the authority did, to plan that ahead of time to make us competitive for the grant, the supplemental grant that we just received for that building. So we've paid ourselves back for these two projects, and now we're working on this one, the terminal redesign. And we just had a schematic detail meeting last week, and that's going very well, as the chairman alluded to. And then, this is what it looks like. So the fire station will be over here. Currently, this is where the rental car parking lot is, so we're going to move the rental cars over to this area where the employee lot is, then move the employee cars out here to where the rental car overflow is. And then, we'll start in the terminal back here, Phase 1, and then Phase 2, which this slide will show that a little bit better. So the first part is the hold area, we only have 95 seats back there now. We have 76-seat airplanes coming in here fairly regularly. You get two of those, and you have people sitting on each other's laps, you know, waiting to board their airplane. This is our new fire station. So late last year, we got a supplemental grant from the FAA for $4.9 million. We were one of two airports in the state that got one of those supplemental grants. Asheville was the other one. Senator Tillis came down with Secretary Chow to announce those, so we're very excited to get that. And what that does, I'll show you here with our upcoming grant, that relieves the pressure on our program a little bit by getting the supplemental or extra grant for this year. You can see the schedule on the side, we've gone out to advertise, we've had a pre-bid meeting. We think we're very fortunate. Of course, knock on wood, we had nine firms show up, seven of which we know have pulled plans at this point. So we hope to get plenty of good bidding done. You know, we're a little bit worried about that with everything that's been going on, but, you know, hopefully some of that's behind us. And Ari, thanks for sending us, he sent a list of some of the contractors that you've used in some of your recent projects yourself, so that opened up the aperture a little bit for who we sent that to. Okay, so sometime, hopefully before September 31st or 30th, however many days are in September, we will get this grant for this year. What we're going to do, again, we're not having to put it towards the firefighting station, so a new firefighting truck is going to be on here, so the $1.3 million is what our entitlement is. So every year, based on our employments, that's what the FAA allot us year to year. So about $800,000 for a new firefighting truck. And then this is the foot stomper to this slide. We're going to invest a half million and go and start doing the environmental documentation for the runway extension and road realignment. Mid to late last year, we were getting a lot of momentum build-up for the road realignment of Williams Road, but then everyone knows the DOT budget kind of hit the skids a little bit, and we lost a lot of that momentum. So my hope is by the point that we're going to start this environmental documentation, that's going to apply a lot of extra energy to that discussion, both with the FAA and then the NC DOT. So that's what I'm banking on this year to get that discussion going again. Okay. Not meant to be an eye chart here, I just want to point out a few things. So I said we have the 20-year plan, that we update 10 years at a time, and then we come up with a five-year program. That's what this program is. I was just up with the FAA two weeks ago, and it's not really a slap the table, but it's a, you know, vertical head nod that this is what the program needs to look like in the next five years. In this document, on one page, you see our kind of 5-, 10-, 20-year plan, and under the five-year, or how it's broken out, it's $40 million. So a lot of people say, wow, you know, $40 million. But that's why I wanted you to show this slide, this is how it breaks out. So in 21, 22, 3, 4, and 5, it turns into Airport and Program, Airport Improvement Program Number 45, 46, 47. So that's how those numbers relate. So each year, when we come and bring these grants to you, they are part of a program, so it's not something that we just thought up, you know, the 12 months prior and got this money for. So you can see in 21, which this is federal fiscal year 21, which is of course slightly different than our fiscal year, it's a little bit later in time actually than our fiscal 21, that we'll be starting here just in a few months. $9 million to do Part 1 for that terminal. Then we go to the next year, Part 2, another $9 million to do that. The piece here, over here, sponsors' participation, we're required to pay 10%. In this Part 2, that's more than 10%, because in Part 2, will be a lot of the terminal upfront, which will not be eligible for FAA grants. So we're going to have to apply more than 10% of our share of that to get that part of the project completed. So if you look all the way down to the bottom, these five years, 34 million, well, that's not 40 million. Well, like I just showed, we got an extra 5 point, or $4.9 million for the ARF building, which was part of this plan, and then the apron, we've already had done. So we'll be just over $40 million at the end of five years, in accordance with the plan that we've studied, vetted, and are in the process of having approved with FAA. And when I say in the process, you see this projected on the ALP, I talked about that before, that's the Airport Layout Plan. Most of these say yes up at the top, but then you start seeing some no's coming in here. That's why we are currently doing the new ALP. Those no's, or asterisks, we'll change to yes as soon as they approve that plan. And again, we've already had the discussions with the FAA. And then finally, over here, to go with the $40 million, we have about $4 million that we're going to have to pay in the next five years. Wow, that's a pretty heavy lift. The good thing is, the North Carolina General Assembly last year just allocated specific funding to the commercial service, 10 commercial service airports, and we're expecting about $1.4 million a year from the state. So it'll be very similar to the FAA's program, where we will, in effect, get an entitlement from the state. So that will help us on our share of that. So we're looking to do, you know, the remaining part of a $40 million, five-year program, no financing. And that's walking the tightrope, but that's what we've gotten so far. The commercial airports have worked very hard with the General Assembly. That money is coming out of user fees as well from short-term lease rates, i.e. rental cars at the airports. Any questions on that? Like I said, I know it's an eye chart, but this is the part of this brief that I wanted to let you know that every time we come here with a grant every year, it is part of a bigger plan. I just wanted to try to pull that together for you.
I wrote that down, no financing.
And then this is the picture that's, again, in this brief. You know, quickly, the yellow is in the next five years, the orange is in the six to 10 years, and the blue is beyond 10 years, and the pink is wishful thinking at this point. Gratuitous picture of my airplane that I built in my garage that I now fly out of our airport, so...
Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if you will. First, I would say to our young citizens that are here in the Board Scout troop, something that you can take away from Mr. Shorter's comments today is that you are owners of this airport, as citizens of this county. And since this Board of Commissioners have allowed me to serve on this short time on the airport board, it is very professional, and the leadership that we have there by Chairman Mr. Meekins and also Mr. Shorter, they do a good job, especially since this airport is self-sufficient. You know, I think that speaks volumes for the citizens of this county. And my Co-City friends back there, y'all saw that fire truck, don't tell our folks in Co-City about that $800,000 fire truck. But all positive, which I have to say, since my tenure of serving, I appreciate what y'all are doing, and I've got great confidence in the leadership we've got, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And thank you, Director and Chairman, for your presentation, I think. Yes, Danny?
Kind of unrelated, Andy, to the presentation, but we have two carriers that currently fly on a regular basis. Delta Connection and the American Eagle, I guess.
Yes, sir.
How satisfied are they at this point with what's going on at our airport? Are they comfortable with where we're at, and what, if anything, that we need to do to...
Yes, sir. And as you might imagine, they're big stakeholders in the airport. And another piece of this I didn't go into is the passenger facility charge. They do get a vote in that. And things that can't be covered by the FAA grants, we can collect other monies to then use that, and they specifically have to sign off on that. So their understanding of what we're doing is very important to what we're doing, because it's based a little bit on the forecasts of what we think they'll be doing in the future. So the piece that I didn't point out on that terminal expansion, other than creating a larger area for people to wait for planes, is putting in jet bridges. So they're very interested in that at this point. It's a safety issue for the passengers and their workforce as well, so we're going to go ahead and attempt to do that. The runway length is a piece that, you know, we're working around right now, but of course, they would prefer to see a longer runway. The jet that we're getting two times a day now, the CR-900, in the summertime requires that runway length. And even the jets we have, on a very hot summer day, they're having to download passengers. So, you know, that's a horrible business decision that we need to make sure that we do all we can to correct that to what I call keep the table set, so they will continue to be here and be happy and provide the service to the community. But then also, of course, they're businesses, they need to be able to do it on the profit margin that keeps them here. Thank you for the questions, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Department of Matters, Emergency Services, Jean Matthews and Stanley Kite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce Captain Jean Matthews as the Co-City Rescue, and she has to make her presentation on her intent to purchase a new ambulance.
Okay.
Thank you, and good morning to Mr. Chairman and the county commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here today, and thank you for all the support that you've given us in the past years. I'd like to introduce our team that came with us miles before we. He is one of our board members, he's been with the rescue squad 15 years, and these are all volunteers. Dora McCoy, who is currently our treasurer, she's been with us 20 years. Billy Matthews is our vice president, and he's been with us 15 years. And Bob Nichols, he's been with us about five years. So all of these are volunteers, and I'm sure you all know that that's a lot of time that they dedicate to this squad. Just to give you a little bit of history, Co-City was established in 1981 as a basic squad. We had 22 members. This year, we have 39 years of service being as a volunteer rescue squad. Next year will be our 40th anniversary, and we will invite all of you to our 40th anniversary celebration. In 1989, our squad became a D-level squad. We progressed, became an ALS squad. In 2012, we were approved to be a paramedic squad, and we were the first paramedic squad in the western part of the county. So that's a plus for us and for our county. Since 1981, we have purchased seven ambulances, five new and two used. We did purchase one equipment truck, which we gave to our fire department to use. We pride ourselves in managing our finances and have been able to purchase new equipment, upgraded equipment, to serve our patients and our communities. Some of those include the LifePak 15s, our Lucas. For those of you who don't know what a Lucas is, it's a machine, and these young Boy Scouts can think about this as you grow up. When you do CPR, how many of you have had training in CPR? Okay, so you know when we talk about doing the compressions, right? Okay, we live in Co-City, which is about 20 minutes out. So can you imagine doing compressions for 20 minutes on the way in in the back of an ambulance? It'd be kind of hard, wouldn't it? But we do it, and we have done it, but we were able to purchase these new Lucas machines that fit over the body, and they automatically do the compressions. And it is a wonderful tool. We have two stair chairs, which what those are, we go in the house, and we can extricate a patient in a chair that can't walk, or we don't have room to get the stretcher in. We have purchased two self-loading striker power stretchers, which means they automatically go up and down, which saves our backs, a lot of us. And we have the King Vision system, which is a new way to do the intubation. And we have the King Vision system, which is a new way to do the intubation, which actually puts a camera down your throat, and you can see what you're doing, which makes it a lot easier. But down to the reason we're here today. We're here today to ask you, our Craven County Commissioners, for approval to purchase a new demo PL Custom Type One Classic one-seventy with a Ford F-50 Series four-by-four diesel classic for two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. This truck is really a unique truck. It's a lifetime, excuse me, a lifetime warranty on electrical structure, local manufacturing service, the frame is constructed with solid crash protection, new center access seating complies with the new standard, along with harnesses protecting the medic and board. Now, I don't know how many of you have ever been on an ambulance, but when you're riding down the road, and you're helping your patient, and you're standing up, we have excellent drivers, excellent. But anything can happen, especially now that new seventy, like a deer running in front of you or something like that. But with this new truck, we will actually have a harness, like a safety belt, that we will strap around us, and we can move around the truck, but we're not gonna fall, which is something that is absolutely gonna be wonderful for us and our patients. We have a onboard, a one-hand inverter providing power to all of our equipment, a full cab seating, the LCD monitor with two cameras, one for the backup camera and one in the patient's area, so that we can see. They will install our striker system from our old ambulance into the new one, so we won't have to buy anything else like that. And the driving force that brought us today to request the purchase of this is that our old ambulance, which is seventeen years old, has been plagued with mechanical issues. At the last mechanical failure, we all agreed that we would start looking for a new ambulance. We contacted an ambulance manufacturer, several of them, and we received a response from this vendor, C.W. Williams out of Rocky Mountain. And they said, hey, we have a demo that we'd like to bring you and show you. We said, okay, bring it on to us. So they brought it, and we all just absolutely fell in love with it, because we think this would be something that we could have for a long time and really benefit our county and our patients that we serve. The ambulance meets any of the enhancements and new technology that we would want to build in an ambulance. The good thing about this is that it's ready. Once we get approval, we can go ahead and purchase it and put it in place today. It won't, we won't have to wait six months or so to have it built. If approved, our plans are to pay sixty-one thousand dollars down, and we would finance the remaining of the hundred-and-fifty thousand. We have already contacted BBNG, and we have, we are told that we can get a loan for two years with the interest rate of four percent. We currently have eight paid employees and nine volunteers. Therefore, we need to keep a sufficient amount of money in, in our, in our accounts to cover the payroll as well as our normal expenses. With that being said, I'm sure all of you know that Co-City has operated since nineteen eighty-one on the funds that's been allocated by Craven County and monies that we've received from grants, donations, and fundraisers. Now, we do plan on selling our two thousand and three Ford, which I said is seventeen years old. It has eighty-three thousand miles, but we are gonna sell it, and we put that towards the new ambulance. Also, in two thousand and eighteen, September, I know y'all all know this, but we incurred an additional cost that we had to pay out of pocket for twenty-three thousand due to Hurricane Florence. Now, we have filed with the county for the FEMA, and I know we'll get it back, but that's still another expense that we're getting a, a plan on. Our second unit that we use is a two thousand and nine Ford Lifeline ambulance, and it has sixty-four thousand miles on it. Right now, it's doing fine, we don't anticipate any problems, but once we pay this one off, the new one, if approved, we will start planning towards our second one. So in closing, again, we thank you, we appreciate everything you do, and...
No, 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 no.
What questions do you have for us?
Do the Commissioners have any questions? Jean, I would like to say to you, that's one of the best presentations I've heard of how an ambulance operates and how you operate to get into a home to get somebody out, and I congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment or two. If you notice, provided in your agenda packets and, and what Ms. Matthews just said, they have eight paid employees and nine volunteers. Co-City Rescue Squad is probably one of our more blessed squads in the county with that many volunteers, because you find many that don't have that many. I look at Ms. Dory and, and Ms. Jean, and definitely their spouses are a part of the team, but they dedicate a lot of their time every, every day to keeping this squad going. And, and I thank you, County Commissioner, that represents western Craven County for what you do. I, I think, Mr. Chairman, C.W. Williams is a notable distributor. They have provided a lot of squads, fire trucks, for our county throughout the years. And I, and I, I, I think it's probably one of, about as good a deal you're gonna find anywhere. A lot of difference from when you started out and paying twenty-eight hundred dollars for one...
Yes, sir, probably a difference.
Versus two-hundred-and-eleven thousand.
Wish we could go back and pay twenty-eight hundred for this one, I assure you.
I would ask Stanley or Jack, in the question that Ms. Matthews raised about the twenty-three thousand from Hurricane Florence, is there any update on that FEMA money reimbursement?
It's in process right now, sir. It's, you know, best case scenario, eighteen months typically on those type of things. So we should be getting close to the reimbursement.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the City of New Bern Fire Rescue First Responders, Stanley Kite.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, presented the recommendations of the UMS Advisory Council at the former meeting in which the matter was tabled for the city of New Bern First Responders and Medical Responders to be able to function as basics into the Craven County UMS System Plan. And at that time, that matter was tabled, I'd like to bring it back before you again today for approval and to follow the recommendations of the UMS Advisory Council. If you have any questions, be glad to do that.
I think it was tabled because of authorization by the city, and I think that's been answered. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to...
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Department Matters, Planning Department, Chip Bartlett and Don Bumgarth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have for you today, first item is a basically a blanket resolution approving the administrative guidelines and policies for Craven County's expedited buyout related to Hurricane Florence. Just a reminder, expedited, or what we call fast-track buyout, is a new project. Ultimately, the grant comes quicker, and the clock for it moves a lot quicker. So we are tasked with purchasing six properties that were funded under the expedited buyout and removing those structures by the second anniversary of Florence being mid-September. So the policies that you have in front of you are typical policies that you've seen before with other flood mitigation assistance projects and HMGP projects that the county's done in the past. The one change that I will bring up and mention is in the procurement policy. On the, the, the last page, there's a bullet point there. The Craven County Board of Commissioners realizes the importance of prompt action in the interest of maintaining satisfactory project progress. Therefore, the county manager is hereby authorized to approve and execute all professional services, procurement, demolition contracts, change orders, and all paperwork associated with the acquisition process following approval of just compensation by the Board of Commissioners. So we will be back before the board when we have a, the offer just compensation, as usual. We will be in front of the board, even though Craven County hasn't done acquisition in a while. I can't recall feeling any sense I was here for Hurricane Floyd in two thousand and three. So it's been a while, but again, going back to these six, for the sake of time, since we have to move so quick with these, we are asking to give the power to the county manager to sign the professional services contracts. You will still be, will come before you when we're making an offer on a house for approval, but the professional services, which involve appraisers, legal, asbestos inspections, I think that may be it, surveyor. Will, what we're doing is we're soliciting proposals from local and regional firms. We're ranking those proposals based on the RFQ. We'll go over it with staff, and then we'll make a recommendation to the county manager to go ahead and put them under contract and get them going. Because ultimately, again, the, they want us to, to purchase these properties and to remove them by the summer. Normally, we have thirty months, so we're already working on less than nine.
Let's take the first one to vote to adopt, to authorize the chairman to sign the policies. Do I have a motion?
Second.
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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Okay, the next one was the CBG Neighborhood Revitalization.
Correct, yes. Speaking of professional services, we are requesting approval to move forward with the selection of an engineer for the CDBG NR Neighborhood Revitalization Grant, which is also a storm-related program, which will involve the repair of four to six storm-damaged homes. So I'd say three to four of these homes are slab or on the ground, basically, and will require some elevation. So we'll need an engineer to prepare those sealed drawings. We procured for services, we received two proposals, one from the Adams Company and one from Appian Consulting Engineers. Both proposals were reviewed with staff. Ultimately, obviously, they're both experienced engineers and have both worked with HMGP and elevation programs. However, Appian has worked with us on several of the past elevation programs and has shown that they are able to get the work done without any, ultimately without any callbacks, limited liability, and we feel like they'll offer the best service as well, as well as being efficient and cost-effective. So the recommendation for surveying service, or, excuse me, engineering services for the CDBG NR is Appian Consulting Engineers out of Rocky Mountain.
I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Yes.
Don, where are you at? Now, I know, these were selected by the state, they came to you, and these went to the state for selection. How many people we have that didn't get selected that signed up for this buyout program?
Probably somewhere in the range of about another twenty structures.
Are these six still viable? Because why I'm asking, if they're not, do...
They're viable.
They're all viable?
Yes, sir.
Is there any opportunity that we're gonna get, go after more? Or the other twenty-five didn't qualify or meet the requirements?
Yes, we, we have made a proposal to the state to try to utilize some of the money that was allocated by the state of North Carolina for disaster assistance. And we have received some word back from them, and we are in the process of continuing our negotiation to try to see if we can do this without costing the county a substantial amount of money. We're, we're dealing with those types of issues at this particular conjuncture. So the county manager is, is going to be assisting us with that negotiation process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is more of a statement than a question, but where's the Hurricane Matthew money? I mean, you know...
That's true.
We, we've got homes you talked about, we hadn't had a buyout of property since Hurricane Floyd.
Right.
Well, we had same folks that got affected through Hurricane Matthew, a lot of the same ones that did for Floyd. What did they do with that money?
Well, as I understand it, they, they still have that money, but it's not, at this particular time, it's moving on a very slow basis to get out to the communities.
Well, you know, it's kinda, I mean, it's kinda hard for me when the majority of my district was affected by, and, and...
And part of mine, yeah.
Was affected by Hurricane Matthew and Floyd. And here we are, already distributing funds outwards. I'm glad these folks are gonna get it, they need it. But, I mean, you know, I feel like that rule folks have been forgotten, is what I feel like. And I don't know where the blame goes to the governor, if he's holding the money, or who, but I think whoever needs to be exposed, and so that's a statement, so.
Right.
Our version, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're right, because some of these people are still not in their homes. It's a shame.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can say without a doubt, the homes in New Bern have been left out. A lot of people still not even in the home. A lot of people even walk in the streets, 'cause they don't have nowhere else to go. So we have a big problem that needs to be fixed. And it's, it's a shame, it's been over a year now. And FEMA from, from, I can see where FEMA didn't do a good job in what they were doing, because a lot of people were left out. And they, I can see they took a lot, took the damage of a lot of people, because a lot of people don't know how to go through the procedure. And going through that procedure, you never know when you're gonna get anything. So it, it, we just have a tricky situation. I tell ya, I, I'm a little disgusted with the way things went, but that's gotta keep by.
Mr. Chairman, also, we have the same problem in the hollow community. They don't receive no funds at all, and people are living, still living in hotels, and all the people, families. And they haven't got the money from Matthew's office.
We're talking about Florence there, he was talking about Matthew. Next is the subdivision for approval?
Yes, sir, we have one subdivision for your board's consideration this morning. The Planning Board recommended this subdivision called Perry Town Estates, Phase One. The property is owned by B&amp;H Enterprises, it was engineered by Thomas Engineering. It's located in Township Number Seven off Perry Town Road. It contains eighteen lots on eighteen point seven-five acres. Each of these lots is served by county water and individual septic systems. And in order to move forward with this subdivision, a vote to approve the subdivision is needed.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
All discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what is this gonna do with our continued flooding problems that we've got down there? I mean, is this gonna contribute to more of that, or?
Well, I think the, when this particular area was originally established as a building lot, it was one home placed out there, and as a result of it, there are what we call some natural bays or natural bowls that allow the water to actually reside in before it reaches a level that it will drain out down through part of the Croatan area. So as a result of that, the owners started trying to address that flooding situation in, in and around their own personal house. I think they're the same folks that are developing the balance of these properties. But they have come in, and they've dug some areas out, removed some dirt, and they've also hired an engineer, John Thomas, to go out there and try to design and address this area so that if it is a concern, it'll be what necessarily can't leave the site because the Croatan's full, or the adjacent bodies of water can't accept the normal flow or drainage in the area. Do you have anything to add to that, John? I know you've...
I'd be glad to go.
Sure.
If there was some running districts out there that were pretty challenging to do this project, and a few years ago, in CDAT on Perry Town Road, upside the pipe, forced that road up the way of those six. There was a couple driveways between this project and that that were constricting and the asphalt ditch was in bad shape. We replaced those pipes with larger pipes and threw that ditch. Also, on the other side of Perry Town Road, there was another driveway that basically damped up the swamp. damped up a swamp, so to speak, before it could get to the creek. We were able to go in there with that property and upgrade pipes under that driveway, so it's been significantly improved in there, and I believe that it would work for the most part.
And I'm not against the development. I don't want you to leave here thinking that, but this room was full, what, two years ago? So, with residents from that area over the concern of flooding, you know, and here we are gonna put, you know, more homes there, more asphalt down and so forth, you know, and if you feel comfortable and you can assure us as the Board of Commissioners that we're not gonna cause a greater problem by moving forward, then I have no trouble in supporting you.
I don't see any greater problem, but there are some natural areas out there that, you know, when you get the proper amount of rain, even though it's a sand hill, you know, it takes a while for the water to get out when you have a two or three-inch rain, you know, in a matter of a couple of hours. It's a problem. Can't, you know, so much water leave the site, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I need a motion to approve the subdivision.
You already have that.
Sorry about that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? No nays, ayes have it.
All right. Thank you.
Next is Department of Matters Recreation Approved Budget Amendment and Award Contract for Construction of Recreation Administration Building. Gene Hodges and Greg Warren.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
We'll let Craig keep his seat, and who we get questions about the money, if there are any. So, September twenty-third, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to move forward with plans to construct a new Recreation Administration facility at Creekside Park. On October twenty-first, Open Call Your Architects will select a design team for this project. Included in your packet were some plans and renderings. This project was advertised on December thirtieth, and a pre-bid meeting was held on January the seventh. Bids were opened on January twenty-first. Eight firms submitted bids for this project with IMEC Group LLC being the low bidder with a base bid of four hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred dollars. The bid tab is also included in your board packets. After notification that IMEC was low bidder, it was requested that they review their alternate... their price for alternate item G1, which was paving of the parking lot for the building. They were able to revise this price down to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We recommend moving forward this project and awarding the contract to IMEC Group LLC in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Craven County has experience working with IMEC Group in the past with hazard mitigation projects. A budget amendment in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars has been prepared that includes the following: five hundred and ten thousand, three thirty-nine for construction, forty-seven thousand for design and engineering, thirty thousand for furniture fixtures and equipment, and fifty-one thousand dollars for contingency. It's staff recommendation, the board approved the budget amendment and authorized staff to contract with IMEC Group LLC for construction of a Recreation Administration facility at Creekside Park.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Just one question. How many parking places are associated with this building? I'm... if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like six.
And if you've got the parking places, then also where staff would be parking, if you're looking at the picture with the darker gray...
Where it says gate.
Right.
Okay.
Then the staffing would be behind the gate, and then the six parking would be for the public.
Okay, for the visitors. Okay, got it.
All right, I have a motion, a second. I have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Loyer?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Move on.
Next item that I'm bringing before you is for the Convention Center. On July eighteenth, twenty nineteen, the Board of Commissioners awarded contract to Barnhill Contracting to complete the first phase of repairs and enhancements to the Craven County Convention Center. The project was broken into phases to allow more time to design the more complicated parts of the project while still opening up the center for events in October. The first phase has included, among other things, new floor surfaces, wall coverings, extensive painting, a large amount of electrical work, and lighting upgrades. The second phase of the project will include installation of enhanced lighting in the ballroom, redesign of veranda, and enhanced pre-function space in the back areas of Heritage Hall. Renderings of these new elements were included in your board packets. The initial bid from Barnhill for the Phase Two work was over four million dollars. Through deeper analysis and reviewing design alternatives, this bid was reduced to three million, six fourteen, three hundred. During Phase One of the project, we've achieved five hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars in project credits that, when applied to this new revised bid, puts the total cost for Phase Two at three million, fifty-two dollars... three million, fifty-two thousand, forty-six dollars. Staff recommends that we issue a change order to Barnhill that will amend the current contract to include the new amount and finish the project. A project ordinance and budget amendment are included in your board packets and must be adopted to award this change. These amendments include costs associated with the balance of the design and engineering fees, one hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, furniture and fixtures budget for two hundred and fifty thousand, and a project contingency of three hundred and sixty-one thousand for the remainder of the project. Of course, it does include the amount of the change order, the three thousand... or three million, fifty-two thousand, forty-six dollars. Again, the request is to approve the project ordinance and budget amendment and authorize staff to issue a change order to complete the second phase of the Convention Center relaunch.
It's too bad we don't have this on video, but this is really beautiful. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Let me have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Loyer?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda are appointments pending, current, and upcoming. Board action appointments will be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have five vacancies. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, three vacancies. Now, I've gotten... we had a meeting with the COG. We've gotten some cooperation from them. I would like to see these vacancies filled by the commissioners if we can, because we've got the Adult Care Home with five vacancies, and, you know, their job is to go in there and make sure that these people are being served the way they should be and taken care of. And I think it's a very important committee, and also the Nursing Home Advisory Committee with three vacancies. So, if we could get to work on that, I would appreciate it. Senior Legislative Tarheel Alternate, one vacancy. Anybody? No. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one mental health position. What's... any... did we have anybody come in?
No, that's something Jennifer's working on.
Okay.
Identifying.
Recreation Advisory Committee District Five, you spoke to me about that?
Yes.
And you're working on it?
Yes, thank you.
Craven Community Child Protection Team, we have a vacancy, and Craven County Clean Sweep vacancy, so those please. Current appointments, Craven Aging Planning Board, Linda Brown wishes to be reappointed.
I'll reappoint.
All right, point by acclamation. Nursing Home Advisory Board, David Dietz wishes to be reappointed.
I'll apply for that, please. I'd like to know that he'd be reappointed.
Pointed by acclamation, thank you. Craven County Health Board, Dwayne Alligood wishes to be reappointed.
I'll reappoint.
Okay, acclamation pointed. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Gracie McCarthy has submitted application showing in attachment eight B, seeking appointment to the JCPC to fill the student position.
So do the Mr. Chairman.
Okay, acclamation, thank you. Upcoming appointments, Craven County Aging Planning Board and Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council. Attorneys Report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have one item for your consideration today. It is a initial offer to purchase real estate located at three eighteen Crescent Street in the city of New Bern. This is a parcel that the city and the county own jointly by virtue of a tax foreclosure. The amount of the bid is thirty-eight hundred dollars. The taxes and costs that were originally foreclosed on were ninety-six, eighty-seven point thirty-five, and the current tax value is seventy-six hundred dollars. The board has customarily allowed the municipality to take the lead in these types of matters, so the city has tentatively accepted this offer, subject to this board's approval. It is our recommendation that the board join the city and move this along toward getting it back on the tax rolls.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
County Managers Report.
Mr. Chairman, I'm probably gonna do a whole heck of a lot of talking in a little while, so I'm just gonna remind the board, on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, we have a regional NCACC, Association of County Commissioners meeting in Duplin County. If you plan on attending, please let Nan know in the next couple of weeks, so we can make arrangements to travel.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Reports. Commissioner Booker?
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Interest of time, nothing to report.
Mr. Havlock?
You know, I won't. I already got this one thing. I lost a good friend here a week ago, this past Friday. I think there were a lot of people here knew him, and that's Frank Marmaros, longtime community owner here in Havlock, in the New Bern area. Developed Carolina Pines, developed the links in a number of large apartment complexes in Havlock. He's come to disease. He's been fighting for a long time, and it was cancer, so. Keep this in mind. Thank you.
Commissioner McCabe?
Just one thing I have, Chairman, is that in January, the Sheriff's Department had Frankie to come down to the Hollow Community, and we picked up a lot of trash, mattresses and Bojangles and all kind of boxes came out on the highway, and we took our trash on Adam Creek Road, the Fair Road, and Temple Pond Road, and we picked approximately thirty-five bags of garbage. And three days later, it was back full of given trash. And we need to somebody throwing trash from out of New Berners from Bojangles, McDonald's, and Outback, Cookout, something like that. It's bad on highways. It also to get through the watering to the crease, and it hurts the fish stuff in the water. If it's on another fifteen years, there ain't gonna be no fish, because we got too much trash in the water. So, Frankie from the Sheriff's Department, we've done a good job in helping try to pick the trash up, but we need the community to come out and try to participate, and had to pick the trash up on all the highways, from the east to the west. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I'd like to say, for the Black History Parade on... yes, on the weekend, we had an outstanding, outstanding togetherness in presenting this parade. Brother Victor Teller, he headed it up, and it was, I tell you, it was something to see. It was a little chilly out there, but it was pretty. And I think people working together can just about do anything. People were lining up, I didn't think, because I see that many people out there cold as a wood, where that wind was going. But I tell you, it came off pretty good. Had motorcycles and just had some of everything you could name, then it went out to the Cape of Park and had a good time out there. People telling about their history, and people talking about togetherness and working together to make this a great county and a great city. So, if we get people together, I'm sure we can just about do anything we desire to do. We're just hoping that we continue to work together, that we may be able to make this county one of the greatest counties. It's already the greatest county, but in our area, we want to show people in the United States what a county can really do working together. Also, I want to just say that I'm so enthused concerning this new program that they have and working with kids, small children, the poor, they get to be teenagers or adults, because sometime when you get a certain age, we gather to lose them, and we've spent so much money trying to get these kids back into society, and a lot of them never get back in society, because some of them die in prison. We have so many in prison now that we can't hardly afford them, but we got to still keep people out of them, and our jails stay just about full, so working together, we can start this and make our young people our future, because if we continue the way we had been going, we just about wouldn't have it in the future, because we wouldn't have any young people. I was just so... got information the other day that a young lady at the hospital, and she had twins, and both of them died. When something like that happen, it's gonna cost the county, it's gonna cost family also, because maybe they wasn't taken care... the parents weren't taken care of before they got to the hospital, these kids. We need to look out for our kids, because they have a future. And when we look out for the kids, we're looking out for our future. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one item. This past weekend, I received a petition through mail from a number of citizens in western Craven County, and concerning the desire to return drifting gill nets in the Neuse River, drifting for shad on the Neuse River with gill nets starting in two thousand and nineteen, and there's a desire by citizens here in Craven County to see it returned for one to two weeks. I'm gonna take and forward this with the help of county staff to Congressman Murphy, if you will, and see if he might assist, and also, probably be a good idea to let Senator Sanderson know, y'all say. All right, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that one-stop voting is in process, and really is every citizen's duty to go out and vote. I want to thank the five young men that took the time to come here and learn something about citizen government and their community. I think their parents should be very proud of them, and this is what I think the youth of tomorrow should look like. And I just want to thank you very much, and we're very proud of you, fellas, and hope to see you again. So, thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're recessed.